We call the meeting to an end at this time. Let us be stand for invocation and I pledge allegiance. Dear great Creator, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the precious rain that you gave to replenish the earth. We thank you also for the sunshine which is now shining upon us. We welcome you into this meeting this day to have your way to lead us with your wisdom and your knowledge, but most of all, your foresight. We thank you once again for allowing us to be of service. It is in your precious name that we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will proceed with our agenda outlined. First of all, we have ordinance in possession. We have bill number 2023 dash 2021 for a second reading. It's an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the city of Florence, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July the first, 2023, and ending June the 30th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we are here from Mr. Kevin Brown.
All right. We have the second reading. As far as fund over fund, there were no changes in the budget. It still remains at $150,000, $246,530. One amendment was made was amendment of disbursement for the community programs where we moved funding, reduced funding for no one else shelters and the family, Florence Family Support Center. It added some additional funding to my brother's keeper, the G-Lab Leatherman Center and the Helping Florence Foundation. Before the amendment, the amount, the budget amount was $368,800 for community programs. After the amendment, it remained the same, so we still have the same budget. That's all I have.
Chair recognizes councilman.
Thank you. There was a request that came in that was received today from the airport, and I'll pass out the letter that was received, that says that their fiscal year, their year runs on a calendar basis from January through to December, that they have been working feverishly to improve the numbers of people boarding the planes and the people who are flying in and out of Florence over the last couple of years were using CARES money. The CARES money runs out at the end of this year, and so as they prepare for their fiscal budget, looking forward to 2024, they're needing to, excuse me, continue their marketing efforts. And so there was a request that came in for $20,000 from the city, which they will also talk to the county, they'll talk to other entities, assuming the other counties as well, to see about raising money so they can continue, maybe even enhance their marketing efforts. So this would be an addition, an amendment that I'm, a motion I'm making as for an amendment to the budget to add an extra $20,000 expenditure to go to the Florence Regional Airport for their marketing budget for the 2024 calendar year, and this would be our contribution towards that because their budget line up differently than ours. And it would have to come, I'm assuming, out of the fund balance. Is that right, Mr. Hosterman?
Yes, I mean, with the balanced budget that we had in front of it, the only location upon that would be the two case section, if you remove it from a line item somewhere or fund balance.
Yeah, and this, the amendment that, the motion I'm making for the amendment does not seek to remove anything. This would be just to add an extra $20,000 again, which we received a letter this morning. So it would be, the amendment would be to amend the budget to take an extra $20 out of the fund balance and take that $20 and to apply it to the Florence Regional Airport towards their marketing for the 2024 calendar year.
And I'd like to second that motion. Where would that come from again?
Fund balance, it's, those are the funds, basically, you know, we maintain the balance for emergency use, 30, you know, when there's a unreded policy of maintaining fund balance around 30% of last year's expectations. And so, especially your reserve fund, your, you know, emergency, for whatever reasons.
Any other discussions, any questions? I do want to express concern that this request is coming in at this time. I know we did have a meeting last week, some of the various ones from the airport commission, and I know they just did a study to look at what could be done to enhance the airport in order to attract other airlines there. As of May, there was a grant that could have been applied for, but that deadline passed, so they did not get to apply for that. So with me here, a part of the city, even though the airport is a great thing that we need to focus upon, I do have a concern with this coming in at this late date post our budget. And so even with that being stated, I would encourage the airport with the commission to please be very mindful of the dates, because just as they have budgets that they must secure, we do too as a city when we have funds that are available. And with anyone who's applying for any kind of funding for the city, note that there is a date that is always placed out there for any organization who wants to request funds. So with that being said, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the request for the amendment to the budget has passed, and that completes. So we have voted upon that amendment, so now we need to vote on that budget as being now amended. Do we have a motion?
So, ma'am.
Okay, and he amended it, okay, so, so we're voting on the amended still. So all, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Next, we have on agenda is bill number 2023 dash 24 is a second reading. It's an ordinance to amend section 8.3 of the Cedar Florence Code of ordinance to allow fireworks on private property on July the 4th through the 5th, and on December the 31st through January the 1st in the city of Florence. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second, and third. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed second reading. Next, we have on our agenda is the 2023 Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Workshop.
Mayor and council, as you know, for quite some time now, there's been discussion of the need to upgrade the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, some infrastructure needs, and we've been talking about the need to self-bonds and to raise revenue for these projects. We've had our staff and our consultants working on how that affects our borrowing capabilities, our scheduling, our rates. So today, we're going to do a, we're going to have a quick workshop, I say quick, hopefully a quick workshop, to discuss those projects and funding mechanisms. And in order to do that, I'm going to start with Mr. Hemmeyway, who, as you know, is the expert of all things that flows.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilor.
Good afternoon.
So we're going to do a brief, I'm going to start with the challenge, growth costs. So the reason we're here today is because of growth. And because of that growth, we have to have the revenues in place to be able to handle, not on the present capacity of the system we have in place, but future growth within the city. How did we get here? In 2020, we approved the city works on a 10-year rate cycle. And in 2020, the game plan for the current rate cycle was to pay down debt, to build cash reserve, the Jeffries Creek project, and increase annual operations on the annual budget. So that was a game plan for this 10-year period here, because based on the growth we've been having in the past, we had enough capacity on both the water and sewer side not to handle an expansion within this decade. And the game plan was in 2028 is to begin planning expansion of the surface water facility and the wastewater facility, and decommission of the Timminsville wastewater facility with the 2020 plan. But then, this happened, AESC. So in the 20, in summer of 2022, almost a year ago, AESC came to town looking at Florence's apostle location for their electric vehicle battery facility. If AESC, and you got the multiple colors, the blue, the yellow, and the green, that's potential for three phases of growth. And if all three phases were to occur, that'd be approximately 3.3 million gallons of water and approximately 2.9 million gallons of sewer, if that was to occur in all three phases. Because of that, we went and developed, so now the envision park potential, so the envision project where we're really looking at expanding our capacity on just the envision park is recognized by the full build-out development of the entire envision project. Now, AESC. So the AESC site is here. The rest of the park is for future growth, and this is a road that also begin construction that'll run parallel to the railroad track and then come out of 327 just south of Hamilton Pavilion. So the game plan on the project, what we're doing right now with the water and sewer project, off-site of AESC project, is to be able to serve the entire project site as it builds out. Whereas originally, through the state office of commerce, their proposal is just to put infrastructure in just to serve AESC. So if we just put that infrastructure in, which is about $18 million, then as the rest of the park develop, then we immediately have to put new infrastructure in just to be able to serve the rest of the park. So what we're proposing is to be able to put in a 12 million gallon facility, collection line from gravity sewer, pump station, and force main to be able to have not only the AESC project in all three phases, but the entire build-out and industrial park based upon what type of industries come and their water and sewer demands. Then, because of that, this map shows the growth around the city, in and outside of Florence. The orange location are development that are occurring inside the corporate city limits that existed. The green are developments that are occurring outside the city, you see it system-wide. And then the yellow are locations where there's economic development for industrial use within the system. So all the work we are proposing is not just looking at one part of the system, this is doing a systematic wholesale upgrade of the entire water and sewer system in all aspects and location within the city of Florence and the service area that we serve. Now, this in kind of looking at, if you look at what the envision, before the envision was announced was officially December, we had approximately 2,600 residential units. From December until now, we approximately 3,300 additional residential units. So if we get full build-out of AESC today and had all 3,300 filled out of the residential and mixed-use development, that's approximately 4.2 million gallons of water. If that was occurred today, then our surface water facility would be overcapacity by 630,000 gallons per day, if that was to occur. But hopefully, with the expansion that we are working on designing, it takes us up to 20 million gallons, then that'll leave us future excess capacity to allow for growth and get us there. On the wastewater side, if that build-out was to occur, that'd be a total of 3.78 million gallons of additional sewer at our wastewater facility, and that would leave only about 2 million gallons of excess capacity at the wastewater plant, if all of that was to occur today. So hopefully, what Walter and his team is going to come up and talk about for us, our challenges on the revenue side, is to be able to accommodate all the existing growth that we presently have permitted and allow for future growth that we planned and hopefully we'll see into the future. All right, thank you.
Chair recognizes councilman and then councilwoman.
Michael, thank you, and, and boy, we just love having you in that position. You do such amazing work. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do and the expertise that you bring to the table.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned if everything was built out and done today, that we would not have the capacity, but then if we, once we do the upgrades, we will have excess capacity.
Correct.
I'm concerned about the two timelines, the timeline for us to do what we need to do to create the excess capacity, and the timeline, how that matches with the timeline for growth that you just mentioned.
Yes, sir. Well, thankfully, with the leadership of our city manager, he allowed us to start working this last year. So we bumped up the schedule and began work last year. So we are presently halfway finished with the expansion design of the surface water facility. So what US council and our great leadership be voting on is those revenue bonds, and if those get approved, then we have the financing and funding in place, and we'll be ready to start construction following next year. And then it'd be a two-year process for us construction, so by December 26th, the surface water facility will be online at 10, at 20 million gallons, and then set up to expand with some slight infrastructure changes to 30 million gallons. So that, that, so that puts us ahead of the build-out. Usually with most of the development, you, and I don't know what AESC's full schedule is, if we can land those other two phases, but I don't see that all coming online by December 26th.
The first phase should be in line.
The first phase would be online and real fine there.
Okay.
So we've, based on how we've been developing and houses coming onto the market, we still have probably like four, five years of capacity, but we'd still be okay. But the economic development, you have to have the capacity before the industry come knocking to be able to be in the ballgame. So this is going to be able to put us at, again, at excess capacity. So as industries come, when they ask the question, do you have capacity to serve us? And we can definitely say yes, or if you don't have capacity, say, well, what's the timeframe on which you can get the capacity? Because the major point that the economic development community now focuses on is feed to market. So doing the work we are planning on doing now, it allows us to have that capacity back before we actually need it. And part of what the city manager allows us to also do, we also already working on designing the expansion of the wastewater facility, carry from 22 million gallons to 33 million gallons. We have more capacity available there, so the timeline there is floating a little bit based on what happened with economic development and residential development. But hopefully, by next fall, we'll have that design completely as well.
If I understand what you're saying correctly, if we approve this, then it'll allow us to remain ahead of the curve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Can you bring that map back up? I want to see that road again. And where you said that road was going to be?
All right. The road is, remember, we went out to the grand, the groundbreaking, like a couple weeks ago, this was the AESC site. So they're going to sit five in the egg in this pearl. To the south, this is the railroad as Carver's, right across from Carver's facility. So the road is going to run parallel to the railroad track, and then it's going to cross over Williamson Road, just, just north of Two Mile Creek, the little swampy area after you leave the Glendale subdivision, where you drop down. Once you come back up, there'll be a crossover Williamson Road, and then we'll come out and come around just south of Hamilton Pavilion, and that's located on 327 now.
Okay. And we're doing revenue bonds for this, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'll leave the money part to Walter.
Yeah, who knows?
So they're, they're, they're getting on the, on the financing end of, yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Barnes.
I, I want to thank you, Michael, and to the staff, because when the economic development team has gone out and, and got businesses to come back to Florence, one of the things they said was, we were ahead of the game with our water and sewage. And so we want to thank you, and to the staff, and whatever it's going to take for us to keep that going so that we can bring jobs, so that we can bring that, we can grow Florence in a healthy way, we need to invest in. It's time for us to invest into Florence.
Yes, ma'am. But hopefully, you'll feel that way after Walter shifts.
No, don't, don't, don't.
Councilman Brad.
I share the same sentiments as far as growth cost. Are we allotting anything in this line to take care of our present issues? Because I know citizens of Florence who, who are dealing with stormwater issues, wastewater issues, water quality issues, you know, they're, they're going to want to know that, that those needs are being taken care of as well. Is there any portion of this, our plans to mitigate those, those issues in my sense?
This is completely water and sewer, the stormwater is a separate utility, but yes, sir, on the, the current plans, Jeffries Creek, the sewer project, that's still ongoing, we are hoping to finish up that design later this year. And so that project, we'll be applying for state revolving loan funds in addition to city money to help cover the cost of that project. So hopefully, we'll get approved for state revolving funds next year and be able to start that project next year on schedule, if all of that goes as well. So that project will be going, have to be handling on sanitary sewer system. And that project is going to extend from west by naturally outdoors all the way by east to the wastewater facility there. The, on the water side, we're in the final stages of de-hack now, approving $500,000 as we upgrade the surface water plant to do emergent contaminant, the PFAS, the polyvinyl fluorides, that is being part of what we are looking at for is current capacity serving its water quality and making sure that the new design for the surface water facility, we can capture what those new requirements will be to make sure those surface water facility will handle that. On an annual basis, redo water quality changes and update. Each year, we change our elevated tank where we have a contractor who comes in, third-party, we take it offline, we drain all the water out of, they go in the inside and, and clean and wash any type of sediment buildup and making sure that structure is in place, and that ranges anywhere from an annual $350,000 to excess of $600,000 just on that one project. Also, on an annual basis, we just finished at the surface water facility, changing out the filter meter. That filters all the contaminants that before the water is discharged in the system. We just changed two filters, a couple the first part of June, and that was in excess of $218,000. Hopefully, we'll be ready to do two more after July, with the budget being passed, doing two additional filters in July, and then again, that filters. Then on the groundwater side, then we'll take a groundwater plant offline and do the same where we remove the filter meter and put new filter meter in, so we can try to remove as much iron as possible from the system before it goes into the distribution system. So there are multiple water quality impacts that are done on an annual basis already to try to improve the water quality, but also with us doing the water quality, it also a major impact is interaction with the system, contractors, developers, the fire department. Anytime they open hydrants or, or hit a, a water main, that changes the hydraulic flow of the water in the system. So all of those things lead to disruption within the system that because Florence sits on top of our, we own an iron deposit, that doesn't naturally occur in all parts of the PD. And what we try to make sure, our goal is to keep less than .06 level iron getting into the system, and at that level, usually there is no color associated with iron. But that's an issue not only for the city's water system, but anybody that's on the private wells also, that they are trying to remove the excess iron from the system to minimize that color within the water system. But we do that annually.
Does it also, the wastewater treatment that we didn't get approved for, is money to, to move that wastewater as well?
Right, the, the, the money part is not, the permit, we didn't get approved for a new facility west of Jeffries Creek. So the game plan, that new line that we're working on for Jeffries Creek, that's going to be at naturally outdoors, we'll put a major dislocation there as phase one. Phase two, which is part of the, the future funding of this work that Walter's will be speaking about, is then to putting a new force main from the town of Timminsville to Florence. We'll take the Timminsville plant offline, and then that capacity will go into the Florence main plant, and then that'll handle all of our westward growth into that one major interceptor and handle it from that perspective.
Now, you answered those greats, so when people ask me questions, I'm going to tell them to go to YouTube and watch your answer, because I'm not going to be able to answer like that.
No problem.
Chair recognizes councilman Smith.
Again, like everyone else said, thank you, Michael, and your team and the staff for what you're doing and, and keeping us ahead of, ahead of the ballgame. My question would be, I may have missed it, what is, how much, what is the capacity of water we need for this area?
Well, looking at, if you look at the wastewater side, de-hack, this is what we call the checkbook. So anytime your wastewater facility gets to 80% capacity, they require you to do a performance, performance engineering report. Then, once you get to 90% capacity, they require you to begin construction, or they can put you in a moratorium, until you get enough extra capacity to get you below the 80, 90% mark. So that's how it's happening on the wastewater side. On the water side, you just look at your growth for your highest date. If the combination of your groundwater facility, there by permit are not allowed to operate more than 16 hours per day over the course of a calendar year. And then, so we, since we have a mixed system, we got our groundwater plants and our surface water facility. So we can fluctuate between the two based on the demands of the system. Right now, we're trying to operate our surface water facility to get our baseline flow, and then the groundwater plants to get our peak flow on a daily basis.
Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Does that conclude this discussion on that part? Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'm Walter Goldsmith, and this is my colleague Amy Vittner, and Brandon DeCoste is with us as well. We're with First Tribe Advisors. We serve as your financial advisor. We help you when you're planning bond issues, whether it's revenue bonds or general obligation bonds, to figure out how much debt you can afford, how best to go get credit ratings and negotiate with investment banks to, to get the bonds issued. And so we're very much an independent advisor. We have a fiduciary obligation to look out for your best interest. So please ask us any questions as we go through this. Our presentation today is taking what Michael just shared with you, so the long list of projects, and then we want to add to that, there's some changes in operating costs over the last several years. There's been a lot of inflation, so you have to pay more to employees, operating costs are higher, and then look at what you need to do in terms of customer rate increases in order to afford the projects that Michael outlined and these higher operating costs. And so that's kind of how we, we built this presentation. If we advance forward, the slide's on the screen, to that slide, we would not normally just go out and borrow $450 million, which is roughly what all those projects totaled that Michael was describing. We would phase those borrowings over several years, because you're ready to start sooner. The, the water plant, the wastewater would start a couple of years from now, you're not, not ready to start that. So that gives us a reason to do one bond issue today, another a couple of years from now, there are other projects that, that Michael mentioned that you want to do. So we've laid out a schedule that, that right now would show three bond issues. The first one that you would do in the next couple of months would be for $33 million, that's the top blue table on the top right. Then, we would come back and do a second bond issue in roughly a year for about $183 million, and then a third bond issue out in fiscal year 2026, so, so two years from now, for $230 million. Those are kind of approximate numbers, because that wastewater plant has got to be designed and bid, and so there, there are a lot of moving parts to that, but we know it's going to be a substantial figure. And then there are a number of other projects, as Michael mentioned, the Jeffries Creek Interceptor, the Timminsville Force Main, some other projects down there in the bottom right table, the total about $90 million. There's going to be some application for state revolving fund loans, some grant money potentially, so we know those are kind of swirling around out there. But takeaway from that is, we've got some pretty But takeaway from that is we've got some pretty substantial construction needs that we need to fund over the next several years. If we go to the next slide.
Quick question for you. Do you have this in printouts already?
We do. Would you like it in printouts?
Yes, please, so we can follow along while you're going through, please. Thank you.
And down in the bottom left corner of each page are the page numbers. And so if we go to page four, which are the debt assumptions, somebody might ask, well, what are interest rates like if we go borrow this money? For right now, we've assumed current interest rates plus adding about a half a percent to that. So about 4.5% would be the interest rate that we've assumed in the model. When we borrow each one of these bond issues, we would do it over a 30-year amortization because these are plants that will be in place for a long time, that we want to repay it over a longer period of time. And the basic structure would be kind of like your home mortgage, level principal and interest payments, your early payments have more interest and principal, and then over time, your principal component goes up. But as we're layering in these bond issues, we want to kind of ramp them up over time. And the next page shows you that graphically. The blue bars on page five are your existing principal and interest payments. And then the orange are this for a small bond issue of $33 million. And then the green would be the next larger bond issue for the surface water treatment plant. And then the gray bars are that bond issue two years from now for the wastewater treatment plant. And so in the red circle, what I've shown you is your principal and interest payments are going to jump pretty considerably from about $10 million a year currently to, once we're paying all of those, it'll be about $27, $28 million in every year. So pretty substantial increase, but we phased that in over a number of years to give time for that to grow. So kind of hold that thought as one issue. And then, let's go to the next page, which is, I mentioned to you, the operating costs are going to be higher. And let me back up. Michael mentioned this, each 10 years, you do what we call a rate study. You bring in a separate consultant called Willdam Financial Services, and they prepare for you a financial forecast of your revenues, your expenditures, and what your customer rate increases should be for the next 10 years. You did that in 2020, that was the last one. And it projected about a 3% on the water side, sewer side, I'm sorry, 3% on the sewer side and 2% on the water side. So that was in 2020. But since then, construction costs in these projects have been accelerated. And on the operating cost side, you've seen pretty big increases in terms of employee cost and just operating cost. And so we're now projecting going forward that those annual operating costs will increase by about 5% per year. That's just kind of the new reality. And I will say, we work with a lot of utility systems around the southeast a lot in South Carolina, and this is what everybody is experiencing. It just, inflation cost has hit everybody much higher than anybody anticipated three or four years ago when they were looking at long-range financial forecasts. So now, if we go to the next slide, this is kind of probably what is the most important slide in the deck for you all. And these are the rate increases that would be needed in order to afford to complete these projects and those operating cost assumptions. And I've got in the table on the left side, when you did that 2020 rate study, as I mentioned, water rates were expected to increase 2% per year, sewer 3%. And I show a column with the average monthly bill. That's for an average residential customer who uses about 5,000 or 6,000 gallons per month, what their bill, monthly bill would be for both water and sewer. So for the upcoming fiscal year, that monthly bill would be about $71 for that average residential customer. And obviously, if you're a family of seven and you use more water, your bill's higher. If you're a single person, then your bill is lower. Over to the right, what we're proposing is that for the next four years, 2025, 26, 27, and 28, those increases would need to be about 9.5% to 10% a year instead of that 2% to 3% per year. So not in addition to the 2% to 3%, but in place of. And then, we anticipate that you would be able to get back down to annual increases of about 2% to 3%. The reason, again, that it's going to step up is because we're taking on all of that debt to fund the construction. You could certainly say, well, let's delay the construction out a number of years or not build the projects, and you wouldn't have the rate increases. But as Michael said, it's important that you get these projects done at this time. So the column out to the right shows, the very far right page, shows what that same average customer's bill would be with these new increases. So let's just look at 2025 as an example. Instead of a monthly bill of $73.20, it would be $79.80. So about a $6.50 or $6.60 increase per month, each month over that. And over time, when you get all the way out to 2030, what would have been an $83 bill is now $110. To kind of put that in context of where other cities' customer rates are, if you go to the next page, we compare you, the gray bar in the middle of the page are your existing rates today, $69, again, for an average residential customer. You can see Charleston, for example, all the way out to the right is paying $104 today already. The cheapest is Anderson at $46. This is in today's dollars. I will say, based on what we're talking about with other clients, everybody is dealing with the inflation issue, everybody's dealing with the aging infrastructure and the higher construction cost. So while we're showing you on the prior page that in 2030, your bills are going to be going up, everybody on this page is going to see similar type increases because everybody's facing the same issues that you are, to varying degrees. But it's not as though your bill is going to suddenly become the highest compared to everybody else. My expectation is you'll continue to be right there, average in the middle of the pack compared to other South Carolina cities. The reason we think that's important is as you're recruiting industry to town, it's important that your rates are affordable. You don't want to be the most expensive. Similarly, I will observe that often when somebody is the cheapest, they may have more aging infrastructure or bigger projects ahead of them. So you've historically done a very nice job of keeping your capacity up and your rates affordable. There's a, I'm going to get way in the weeds for a minute on a couple of slides, so bear with me. But when we're setting customer rates, we're not just looking to afford the construction projects and pay the higher operating cost. There are two key financial ratios that we want to observe because they're important to lenders and they're important to credit rating agencies. It's kind of like all of us have a credit score, and when we go to borrow money from a bank, the better our credit score, the better the interest rates, and the better access we've got to borrow money. Bondholders and investors and banks and credit rating agencies look at these two ratios when they're deciding whether or not to lend money to utilities. One of them is called the debt service coverage ratio, and the other is days cash on hand. The easier one to explain is maybe days cash on hand. That's the amount of cash that you have set aside. If you had, if everybody stopped paying their bill tomorrow, how many days could you continue to operate the system? So if you had 300 days cash on hand, you could run the system for 300 days. You need those kind of appropriate levels, you need those levels to be that high, which is appropriate, because there can be unforeseen things that come along, treatment plant expansions that need to pop up, storm events that cause damage, declines in the economy that can put pressure on a system. And so you want to have adequate financial reserves. I'll compare you to other utilities so you get a sense of how you stack up in just a second. The other ratio is debt service coverage. It's kind of like when I go to a bank to borrow money, they'll look at my mortgage payment might be $1,000. If I've got $2,000 left over after I've paid all my other bills, that's a two times coverage ratio. If I've got $3,000 left over, that's a three times coverage ratio. So higher is better. And you can see that the one that says total debt, your projected ratio is 2.39, so you've got 2.39 times in 2024, and it stays in kind of the 170. We recommend a 1.75 times. The balance is, you can force those ratios to be higher and higher, but it means you got to raise customer rates higher and higher. You don't want to do that. So you kind of want to fund all your projects, cover your operating cost, and have good ratios, but not excessive ratios. I've got some peer comparisons on the next page to show kind of how you stack up. Your coverage ratio is on the chart on the left, and it's a 2.25. We recommend a 1.75. As you take on this additional debt, it's going to naturally drop down a little bit. So we think it will still be in that 1.75 times range, and you can see how you stack up to some of the peers. So on the lower end, but you'll be tackling a lot of projects, and we think if you're at that 1.75, you're still very attractive to banks and lenders. And on the days cash on hand, we recommend 270 days. You've historically had a good bit more than that. You can see how it stacks up to your peers. Some of those, like Isla Palms, for example, that has 2,000 days cash on hand, they're very susceptible to storm risk, and so they need to maintain higher cash reserves. Others tend to stockpile cash in anticipation of a big project, so they may say, we're going to build it up for several years and then spend it down. At any point in our projection period, if your cash starts to build up, we'll use some of it to lower those future borrowing amounts. So each time we come back to you, recommend a bond issue, we'll look at, how much cash do you have? Should we draw some of it down to lower the borrowing amount? So these are the, these are the two things that we monitor. Page 11 just kind of shows you that you'll be, the orange bars are where we project you will be. The black line shows the target recommendations, and the takeaway is that you'll meet or exceed the target recommendations that we've got for you, which is in line, again, with your peers. The very, second to last page, I guess, on page 12 is just a conclusion of everything that I've shared with you. So with these rate increases, which we're not asking you to approve today, we just wanted to share this with you, you would be in a position to fund the projects using the assumptions that we've laid out, fund the higher operating cost, and we think by 2029, stair-step back down to those rate increases that you were projecting in 2020. Well, obviously, as Michael bids out projects and you get new construction information, we'll be back to you to refresh this. But we've tried to be really conservative at each step along the way. And obviously, if the wastewater plant, for example, got delayed or costs came lower than what we've assumed, that's to the benefit. And then the very last slide, page 13, just shows you the schedule that we're operating under. So assuming that we're continuing to move forward with the surface water plant, we would be back in front of you on July 10th and August 14th to approve the bond ordinance, the document that authorizes the issuance of the bonds. And at that point, that's when you would also update your ordinance that approved the customer rate. So the 2020 ordinance, we'd recommend that you update that to reflect these higher rates at that point in July and August. And then, we would go through the process of getting credit ratings and putting together the offering documents and close on that first bond issue September 27th. That's when the money would be in the bank for Michael to start spending, and that would be the first $33 million bond issue. We'll be back in front of you next year when it's time to start construction on that.
Have any discussion?
If you have any questions.
Any discussion or questions? Councilwoman Lee Smith Jackson.
On page 10, we talked about the days cash on hand. Now, are we going to use some of that money now to lower the interest? I know you said we could. Is that a thing that we're going to do?
Yes. And in fact, we do have $50 million of cash being used to downsize that third bond issue. So yeah, that would be, each time we go to market, the first thing we would do is look at your reserve balance, the days cash on hand, and determine how much of that should be used to downsize the bond issue so you don't have to issue as much.
But we aren't doing it the first time, just on the?
Not on the first time. So it will be that, probably the third bond issue, maybe the second bond issue, you can see where we are.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brennan.
Maybe a question for our city attorney, but I know council can't vote on something that impacts a future council. But these bonds and this work doesn't look independent of each other. So we vote on the first one, and then a year later, we vote on the second one and a third one. Are any of them in our lot where we begin work? And if a future council did not vote to pass it, we find ourselves hemmed up.
Councilman, you could approve all of them at once, all three issues at once, but the way this is structured, and I think it's the prudent way to structure it, is to approve each one of these issues separately as you go, because circumstances may change, may have new council. Now, once the bonds are issued, those are in place and those can't be changed except under certain circumstances. But I would think, and I'll also defer to the financial folks from a bond law perspective and from a municipal law perspective, you can do them together or in sequence separately. But I would think of doing it in sequence, taking it step by step as you move into this. A lot of that's a function of the practicalities involved of design, permitting, things like that. You're just not going to know and have in hand everything you need to be assured that you're going to need for, and somehow know exactly for the exact project you're envisioning this far ahead of time. So as you move through the process, take off bites of the funding that you can handle as you perform.
What about like joining the first and the second? With them being, it looks like they're relatively close, August of next year. Is there any, I'm concerned about bond fatigue, you know what I mean? I mean, if every two years, council's voting for bond, whether it's this council or a different council, you know, would that be behoove us, or does it just need to be each individual?
I think originally, we did have those first two bond issues in the same piece. The challenge with that was we didn't really know the cost of the surface water treatment plant, and there were these other smaller projects that needed to move forward. So that was one challenge. The other challenge was that, I think, Michael and his team has some requests for SRF funding and other funding mechanisms out there. So we wanted to wait, before we issued the larger surface water treatment plant construction portion, we wanted to wait to hear if there was SRF money available or other grant opportunities available, but we didn't want to postpone the smaller projects.
Because the first bond is primarily AESC, is primarily the energy battery.
Yeah, and there's $20 million of cash in the land purchase for AESC. So we are using some of that cash for that first bond.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
If, and I don't know if, Randy, this is a question to you or Michael, but with the, let's assume that the first bond issue gets approved and we have that in hand, does that put us in a good position to leverage with the state or others by saying, we've already got this, and if there's matching money available out there as a grant by already having approved the bond, you know, sort of like we did with the $7 million that we had, and then we're able to leverage it to get up to $18 million with the state? Does this put us in a position where we're able to leverage somehow with matching money because we've already secured this as a bond? And if you understand my question?
I'm not 100% sure that I can stand up here and say that the bond will help when it comes to matching for other grants. What it does allow, though, is for the big projects to be covered, which then allows us the ability to proceed with some of the smaller projects through these other grant or loan agencies. So I'd like Michael to talk about it with you first.
One of the pieces that was in here that did not get mentioned directly is the revenue stream that we hope will be generated by AESC. And how much was that?
That's $2.6 million, I think.
$2.6 million a year?
Correct. That is included in their analysis.
Okay, so once AESC is on board and everything, and they're using, they will be generating $2.6 million in revenue, which will go towards the payment of these bonds.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Lee Smith Jackson.
What would, so would the $2.6 million that we get from AESC, is that going to cover the amount of the bond?
Not entirely, no. But it counts as revenue that gets paid, you know, used to pay operating expenses and to pay principal and interest, but as to pay principal and interest, but as Michael mentioned, we're not sizing the increases in the surface water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant just for AESC. He mentioned the other projects that are growth dependent, including phase two and phase three. So we've assumed phase one, if nothing else gets built, generates two point six million dollars of revenue. Phase two would generate additional revenue, phase three, and all of the other spin-off development. And so it's not as though we're just tackling expansions to fund what AESC needs, we're trying to stay ahead of not just the immediate growth, but the spin-off growth and the ability to compete for future economic development.
Has the feasibility study been done on these as of yet?
So that's a great question. As part of the bond issue, you'll do what's called a financial feasibility study, so that's a third-party analysis. Will Dan Financial Services does that, they're independent of the city. So all of the projections that Kevin and Michael put together in terms of revenues and expenditures are independently vetted, and so the bondholders will look to that independent study, to say, okay, staff prepared these numbers, this is what the financial feasibility study is projecting. That'll be set to be finished right about the time that we sell the bonds, so when we get into August time period, you saw that calendar towards the back of the presentation, and so when we're coming back to you in July and August for first and second reading, we'll also have drafts of the feasibility study, so if anything has changed in any of the numbers, you'll be able to see it at that point. And then the final feasibility study gets done right about in August, right as we sell the bonds in September.
Now, would it be the feasibility for phase one, or would it be the entire project?
Yeah, we're proposing the entire project. This is pretty significant, so ordinarily, if you were just doing the small, the first bond issue, you may not need a full feasibility study.
Right.
But given that right on the heels of this first bond issue is a larger issue and potentially a larger transaction after that, we wanted to make sure that full feasibility was in place in the beginning.
That's the only question that I have. Any other questions? On our end, that concludes, does that conclude the report?
That does, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. That completes our agenda for today. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All those, any discussion, hearing that all those in favor, city five, I say aye. We hereby stand adjourned, thank you.